I'd like to call the meeting to order. I apologize for that. Mrs. Hetfield, would you please call the roll? Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Beisel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you. In typical President Patrick format, I missed stating the date for the record. It is December 10th, and we are in the Olentangy Administrative Offices Berlin Room. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So move. Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. Please call the roll. Mrs. Wagner Beisel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick? Thank you. We have three presentations this evening, and the first one, we recorded ahead of time. So because OSBA was not able to join us, we have a special presentation for you.
... to recognize the service of district employee Latoya Bennett as an exemplary school employee and Lisa Moore as the district's Friend of Public Education. I'm going to read to you your nominations on each of you so you can hear what has been said. In nominating Latoya Bennett for this award, the Olentangy Local School Board wrote, "Olentangy Schools is pleased to nominate Latoya Bennett for the Exemplary School Employee Award. Latoya is a shining star and exemplifies the essence of what it means to be part of the Olentangy team with her authentic spirit and strong work ethic. As the face of Olentangy for many, Latoya meets and greets all guests visiting Olentangy Administrative Offices with a friendly greeting and warm smile every single day as the office receptionist. Latoya is often the first to welcome guests to our district in her high-traffic area. She must multitask numerous responsibilities during the day, ensuring those who arrive at our administrative office connect with who and what they need. She does all of this with ease and a welcoming spirit." And I can attest to that because she both got me to your office and took her own award last week. Very graciously, I might add. Latoya also fulfills many needs within our Human Resources Department and has assumed most of the responsibilities for scheduling 174-plus interviews for the district's Certified Interview Day, as well as our interviews during outside Certified Interview Days, which exceed 30 each year. This is a time-consuming task as it requires attention to detail with scheduling events, notifying representatives of the details, and preparing recruitment materials for each event. Latoya is a stellar employee of the district and promotes an inclusive and positive culture each and every day with her friendly disposition. Latoya is a proud parent of an OLSD graduate and a current student of the district and continues to express her pride and gratitude for the excellent education her children have and continue to receive. It is without doubt our great honor to nominate Latoya Bennett for the Exemplary Employee Award. Latoya, it is a great pleasure to present that award to you.
I don't even have the words to say how thankful I am and honored to receive such an award. I will continue to put my best foot forward in all that I do each and every day here. And I'm just so blessed, humbly blessed, to be a part of such an amazing group of people.
Lisa, Lisa Moore was also nominated by the Olentangy Local Board of Education for the Friend of Public Education Award. And this nomination reads as follows, Lisa. To those of us here at Olentangy Schools, Lisa Moore is a wonderful example of a friend to public education, demonstrating her support and giving her talents in countless ways to us over the years. Throughout the years, Lisa's children have been students in our district. She has found many ways to give of her time and energy to better our schools and provide opportunities for our students to have an even better experience than they would have had otherwise. Each time Olentangy Schools opens a new building, heavy lifting by our volunteers is essential to our success. When her son's elementary opened in 2010, Lisa was an integral part of opening the school and establishing the parent-teacher organization. She served as the PTO president for at least two years. Fast forward to today, and Cheshire Elementary School is unofficially known as the happiest elementary, in no small part to the efforts of many, but especially Lisa. In 2018, when the district opened our fourth high school, Lisa was there to establish the Berlin Baseball Boosters and has served as their liaison for the past three years. Mike Weaver, head baseball coach, states that from the first day he worked with her, Lisa has been the true leader of the program and ever since. She is always available to answer questions, work closely with parents, players, and community members to help promote and build the baseball program. Lisa also serves as the president of our Olentangy Education Foundation. Lisa's leadership in this role allows the Olentangy Education Foundation to successfully raise funds and cultivate donors for much-needed teacher grants. Lisa provides outstanding leadership to the foundation. Lisa's strong belief in the value of public education is evident as she brings professionalism, passion, and expertise to our entire community. Students, staff, parents, administration, all of whom benefit from her gifts. It is without a doubt our great honor to nominate Lisa Moore for the Friend of Public Education Award. Lisa, congratulations on being awarded the Friend of Public Education.
I'm very shocked. I'm pretty much at a loss for words. Yeah. I can't speak. I would just like to say, the enthusiasm and the support that both of these women give our school district is undeniable, and it's infectious. Both of them, oh my gosh, every time I see them, they're smiling, they're positive. The love for this district is just so vibrant in their faces and in their actions, and I think that's what really makes them stand out and what makes them really deserving of this award. Latoya, I've never walked into any building where people really knew me and were so welcoming and greeting, and you made me feel so good. Every time I walked in, I looked forward to it. I kind of stole some of your energy. And your energy is infectious. And Lisa, I know how the foundation world works, and you stay up, you're positive, you're bright, and with a sense of class and a flair to that.
Well, I am proud and honored to be part of this call, and you know, all the work that both of you put in benefits so many of our students and our staff and the community. And I think about giving of yourself without, none of you expect an award for what you do. But yet, each and every day, you show up and do it for so many of, so many other people's kids. I'm just very proud to have had this opportunity to recognize you in this way. Now, the only thing you don't realize is that you did miss out on the spring banquet that we usually have at Villa Milano and the opportunity to eat a piece of, a four-pound piece of lasagna.
Largest ever.
Biggest, biggest Coach Beisel's head. But maybe we'll make it up to you somehow. Congratulations.
What the public doesn't know is we normally attend two conferences with the Ohio School Board Association a year, and we have the opportunity to recognize people for their outstanding efforts. And Mrs. Davis did a great job of luring both of these honorees into the meeting. I think she told Latoya she had to take notes or something, and she showed up with her smile and ready to do her job. And then Lisa Moore with the Olentangy Education Foundation, she was doing research on the partnership with, she's doing her homework to come to the meeting to get her award. It was very telling of the types of people that they are. So thank you, Kim Miller, for presenting the awards, and thank you so much to our honorees. They are, well, you heard how dedicated they are. Next on our agenda would be our Student Potential Analysis. We would like to welcome Mr. Scott Leopold and Karen Danielle Hamburg from Cooperative Strategies. Welcome.
Hey. We're both tall, so this will be good. Thanks for having us. Believe it or not, it's been 15 years, four superintendents, 50 pounds, and two kids. It's great to be here. We're presenting the student potential tonight. This is the kind of in-depth housing analysis that we do every few years, where we look at the detailed granular housing information that we have. We talk to the developers, we kind of see what's in the pipeline, and we look at, based on that housing, what is our student potential going to look like over the next 10, 20, 50, 100 years? So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Karen. She's actually been working with me to put all this together this year. She's also been helping with the districting committee, and they like her more than me. So I'll turn it over to her.
I would say that's true as well. Well, welcome. Do I have control?
Yes.
Yeah, I gotta turn it on. That would help, huh? There we go. So why do we look at this? So the enrollment projection report that you will get in the future, it models student enrollment over the next 10 years. And what I'm going to go for tonight, forecast enrollment over the next 100 years, based on the housing, student yield development in the works, as well as that vacant developable land piece, which I think is pretty interesting. This also allows us to estimate how many students may result from a future subdivision, which is important in your case, given you have such extensive development going on. And it establishes a timeline for student growth and decline within existing and future subdivisions. So we can really apply this model and look at a subdivision and say, okay, we can expect 10 kids out of it this year, next year 12 kids, and so on, and so on. Something that's very important to note, and I cannot say this enough, these are completely separate studies and should not be combined in any way. The enrollment projections work off the cohort model, and we're working off student yields. So the methodologies are separate. Try to keep that in mind when I'm going through this. So I hope you can see this. The conditional formatting is kind of important here. So what we do is, based on historical observations and even comparisons with adjacent school districts, we do reports like this for pretty much the west side of Columbus and on.
Karen, Karen, do you mind pulling your mask down just a little?
Not at all.
Yeah, I think it's hard to hear on the video.
On the video.
That's totally fine. No problem at all. So we've kind of determined that the single-family subdivisions fluctuate over time in a very predictable pattern. And I'm going to show you some slides that really illustrate that, but if you look at that left or the right side of the column over there, the totals and the conditional formatting, you can see that the yields start off low when a subdivision is built, and then they grow and grow and grow. And in your case, your yields are at point, or 1.3 students a home when it reaches that maximum yield. And after that, it kind of takes a little dive and flattens out over time. I have never done one of these reports where that pattern, that predictable pattern is so evident. So, great work. This just shows the number of houses based on age, so the number of single-family homes within the district based on age. So you can see over on the right-hand side, that's the total. Something I want to point out is that homes built in 2019 are still considered preliminary. So we're only showing five homes being built in 2019. We all know that's not the case. There were many, many more. So that's kind of an outlier, and it's just based on county data availability. But as you go up, you can kind of see where you really hit the peak of housing development, and that was right around 20 years ago, is when you were seeing 1,400, 1,500 houses being built a year. So this is our yield model, and this is what we apply to every single family home within the district. So in this graph, you can see there is the gray line and the red line. The gray line is your actual recorded yields, so the actual number of students divided by the number of units within that year built. And the red is the yield model that we use. You can kind of see the gray line's a little bit jagged. We normalized that a little bit moving forward. So you can see trends are all still the same there. Now, I think these maps are fascinating, and I probably spent way too much time scrolling through these.
I think they're fascinating.
Oh, they're awesome. Okay, I'm glad you feel the same because I love them. So I have 15 years of these maps, and what these are going to show as I move through time is your student density, and you're just going to see, of course, it explode. But something else I want to point out is, in those subdivisions that were already established in 2005, when we have the first year of student data, you can see our methodology really kind of take hold. Those subdivisions increase, 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 and then you can kind of see them start to decrease. So I'm going to start moving through time here. This is the 2005-2006 school year. So this is 2006, 2007, 2007, 2008, '08, '09, 2009, 2010, 10/11, 11/12, 12/13, 13/14, 14/15, 15/16, 16/17. And you can see, if you look up north, you can kind of see that the area around Cheshire kind of getting bigger. 17/18, 18/19, 19/20. And then this is what it looks like current year. So you can really see those subdivisions growing and even declining. If you look in the south side, you can see some decline after a little bit. So I just have a couple of reference maps to show you before I get into the numbers. This is your existing land use. Now, this is based on the county, the county data. Each township does have its own zoning code. So we use the township zoning code in order to kind of calculate that vacant developable land because it does differ a little bit from the county. But this just shows the county data. So that really bright yellow that you're seeing, that's all of the land zone for residential. This does include the rural residential as well, so you're going to see some of those country areas that are also listed as residential. The agriculture, or the land zone for agriculture, is that like sand color. The pink is red, is the commercial. I mean, you can see right around Polaris, that's what that is. And I think the other categories are either vacant or other. That's just what the county listed as, that's that gray. And then the exempt or utility is the brown, I believe. So this next one is kind of interesting. This is every parcel in the district coded by the year built. So the numbers in the chart do not correlate with the colors on the map. The map shows the year built. So anything that's in like the blues or even greens are, have been, the homes were built years and years and years ago, up to 100 years old. As things get redder and redder, that's the more recent buildings. You can kind of see the pockets where things have been built more recently. And like I talked about before, really in the early 2000s is when you were seeing your highest number of units being built. It has kind of steadied off since then. This is your existing housing. The green are your single-family subdivisions, pink are the multifamily subdivisions, purple is manufactured home parks or mobile homes, and then gray is hotels. So in terms of single-family subdivisions, you have 17,922 students coming out of the existing single-family subdivisions. That's out of 22,291 units, and that gives us a yield of .81. Multifamily, same idea, but we're looking less units, less students, so we're at a yield of .18. And then the manufactured home park, you've got 225 units, 97 students, and an overall yield of .43. The development that's going on within the district right now, there's currently 9,238 units that are projected to be developed over the next however many years. Multifamily, there's 2,431 units, and you can kind of get an idea of where those are. I don't think this is going to be much of a shock to anybody. I'm sure you see it when you're driving around. So this is that vacant developable land portion that I was talking about. After we project the students coming out of those developments, we start releasing vacant developable land. Just given your history and how much you have, how much development you have, we do project you have development in the future. So we start releasing this land into our model after a while. So what you're looking at right now is 8,281 acres of vacant developable land, and you can kind of see where that is. It's mostly up north. So now I'm going to go through the student potential numbers. We do have three different models that we run. The models are based on the historic number of houses built a year. Now, this does differ than what you've seen in the past. Because you were seeing more units in the past, we were projecting more units, of course. This year, we kind of brought it down a little bit, especially with COVID and things. We have been bringing these down a little bit more, just because development has halted in some places. So this is what you're looking at for 550 units a year. So in this chart, I don't know why there's that white little portion, but that should all be green. These are coded by the housing types. So the light green or that darkest green on the bottom, that's the existing single-family homes. So like I said earlier, we push all of those homes through our model, and this is what it ends up looking like. So you can see the students are pretty high right now. We're going to, we expect them out of those existing single-family homes to start decreasing and kind of get a little less volatile. The pink are the existing multifamily units. That sandish color is the non-subdivided single-family units, so these are like country homes that aren't in a subdivision. Above that, you really can't see it, but they, we did include out-of-district students. There's, I believe, 48 of them. So those remain flat. We didn't apply them to any of our numbers. Above that is that single-family development. So something I do want to mention about that, this is based on hopes and dreams of developers. We contacted the developers to kind of get their timeline for development. I don't know how accurate those are going to be. Evans Farms told me numbers that were, seemed insane, given that they have not really been producing what they've been saying. But that's just something I wanted to point out. Above that, you're going to see the developing multifamily in that light pink. Above that is the developer-owned land. You do have maybe a couple hundred acres of land that's already owned by developers, and so we released that first, thinking that that land was going to get developed before the vacant developable land is sold off. And then that blue, the blue section is that vacant developable land. So in this model of releasing 550 units a year out of that vacant developable land, we're looking at a maximum enrollment of 32,688 students. Now, yes, I guess.
What was that number?
It's 32,688, or, yeah, 688. Now, that might seem scary, but that is in year 2055.
Right.
And that is if homes keep getting built, as they're being built, that land gets sold off, so on. The mature value is going to remain the same throughout these models. That's just because they were releasing the same amount of land in every single model. And so in this one, we're looking at a mature value of 25,537, and I can't exactly see what year that is, but I believe it's 2075.
85.
85. I'm way off. So moving on, and I have a summary slide of these two at the end. This is at 450 units a year, so this is what it looks like in that case. In this one, this is your actual, right around 450 units is the average of the last couple of years of development. So we did a model higher and a model lower than this. So this is the, using that actual average. The maximum in this case is 31,030, and again, the mature is right around 25,500. Our last model was 350 units a year. With this one, the maximum would be at 29,677. Again, the mature is the same throughout. So this is our summary. 550 units, the maximum is in 2055, the mature would be in 2086. If 450 units were released every year, the maximum would be in 2062, mature in 2092. And at 350 units a year, the maximum will be at 2073, and the mature would reach that So using your current boundaries, I kind of modeled what the maximum and mature would be by boundary. So I don't think this is going to be very shocking to anybody, but here's what you're currently looking at. Now, the boundaries are colored based on their utilization, so the enrollment divided by the capacity. So anything less than 70% is in blue. Anything that's kind of in that sweet spot of like 75 to 90% is in that green, yellow, 90 is 91 to 100%. That's kind of one, we're still in good shape, but we're kind of reaching that 100% line. And anything in red, the darker the red goes, the more overutilized it is. So this is at 550 units a year. This is the maximum enrollment. So you can see the north end is very overutilized in this case. On the south, at least at the elementary level, you're doing okay in terms of enrollment, and that is because those more homes are in the mature range. And here's that mature values there. So you can see, still north end, we're still pretty high in enrollment. This is 450 units a year. This is that maximum. These look fairly similar. The mature, again, this is going to remain the same throughout because those values remain the same. We're releasing the same amount of land. Then 350 units a year, this is that maximum. And the mature. So just a couple of things to note. As you very well know, you are experiencing and will continue to experience housing growth. You have an excellent district, and it shows by all the people that want to live here and send their kids here. I think that's great. I do think that housing development should be monitored, and you guys are doing an excellent job of that already. The northern part of the district does have the greatest potential for growth. It's pretty much everything north of Hyatt and Shanahan Road. And we are seeing that the enrollment has begun to stabilize in the south. Any questions? Go for it.
What percent are we built out? Scott used to be able to provide that number.
He knew. We had a conversation about this. He knew this was going to go.
Scott and I go way back.
I don't have the exact number we can get, and I think it's in the neighborhood of 65%.
See? When I tell people that, they're like, no way. We've got to be all built, you know? But looking at these numbers, I'm just like, what? Okay, you know, at 550 units a year, we don't get maximum built out until 2055. So when you define mature, is that when we have stopped declining?
That's when you haven't, that's when the last house you built is at the bottom of the curve. So we haven't built a house in 20 years.
Okay.
And we look like a Worthington or an Upper Arlington. That's what that mature number is.
Okay. So we've got a while, people. Okay. You got my question.
One thing that I wanted to point out, the 32,000 number is a little higher than what The thirty-two thousand number is a little higher than we had last time we did this. And the reason for that is we have a lot more active development going on. Information that we got from the developers is put into this equation now. And I think that the rate, if we add up all the information they gave us, is in the neighborhood of eight hundred and fifty units a year.
Yeah, and it increases after that.
And then after, you know, once that's exhausted, that's when we get into the, the five fifty, the four fifty, the three fifty.
So it takes the eight hundred
Right.
into account for the beginning.
Right.
Okay.
And so you, you kind of, as you start to look at those, you kind of, we joked about it, it's a two-hump camel. Where you, you kind of see that first hump when all that existing development that we know about occurs. And then you see the second one, once we release those vacant units, those vacant areas we have now, at those rates of three fifty, four fifty, or five fifty.
But like that area that you said, you know, above Hyatt's, it doesn't have the infrastructure that you have in the south yet. Did anybody tell you, like, when they're thinking of putting the good infrastructure in? Because that's when we'll see those lots go.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that any of our models are ahead of when that infrastructure would get developed.
Okay.
I mean, we know that that's going to be the limiting factor that, I mean, you've, you've got to remember that these are, these are models, they're not a crystal ball. We don't have one that has, you know, a recession or a pandemic.
Right.
So it's just, it's something, it's, it's another piece of data that we need to look at as we consider things like when we open schools, where we open schools. And you, you kind of need to use it in tandem with the cohort enrollment projection, you know, and, and other studies it may have.
What about those neighborhoods that are like in the twenty-year range? Where the first home buyers had the kids in, you know, back in our big growth. Those people have sold, but they're selling to people who, yeah, they're, they either have little kids or they're going to have kids. Like my neighborhood in the villages of Oak Creek.
So what our, what our model shows that is that in aggregate, and that, this is that first, one of those first slides that Karen showed that had the, the red and we can go back to it.
Yeah.
So this one. So this, this kind of illustrates that. Because what this chart shows is the, the, the vertical axis is the age of the home, the horizontal axis is the price point. And as those homes get older and they do experience that turnover, we're not saying it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
The model just shows that they never get back to where they were. So you may visually, you may visually see that, oh, we've got these homes selling and younger families buying them, but it doesn't happen.
Like the boom.
It doesn't happen in the same volume where, you know, MI or whoever comes in and slaps, slaps up a hundred homes and they all sell and you've got a hundred tricycles in the driveway. And it, it doesn't, it doesn't happen all at the same time, twenty years down the road. So it's, it's a little bit more predictable. I mean, there are, there are some neighborhoods that you have that we know that kind of break this curve. Like, I think Oak Creek is a good example, because I think Oak Creek is kind of, is, is going to be, you know, very similar to Green Meadows and High Meadows. It's going to kind of be that gateway bellwether subdivision that's going to have a, you know, more affordable housing. Those homes go on the market and they sell and they're desirable for those families to move in. And they, they have their, you know, their first or second child and they move elsewhere in the district and have a, have a, you know, a larger home. And then a younger family fills that in again. I don't think that's the case with all of them. But this, this is kind of, you know, modeled on kind of that macro scale.
Do you have a question?
Um, yeah, but, you know, we had comment about the Berlin Business Park and the twenty-two hundred acres that are in the Berlin Business Park that are up for rezoning to commercial land. That takes a quarter of what we still have as vacant land available off the, off the roll for single family housing. Now, there is some, in, in their proposal, there is some multifamily housing as part of it. But as we see the yield on multifamily is significantly less, so, you know, anywhere, again, just like doing the work to get the Kerbler Farm off the, and into the, into commercial property, off of the single family pipeline. So that work, that work needs to continue.
Yeah, I think a lot of people fail to recognize that the multifamily is commercial property. But in your calculations, in, on the, um, in the development, on the development slide, where you have that there's nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eight units of single family homes, but then two thousand four hundred and thirty-one multifamily, which apartments, that only yields us four hundred and thirty-seven kids.
Eighteen twelve total.
Yeah, but when, when, last year, when I looked at the amount of property taxes being brought in by those, because they're at the commercial property level, they're generating a lot of times more money per pupil than what the houses in my neighborhood are generating.
Yeah, interesting.
So on the yield, so is the point eight one yield, that's a blended yield across all property types?
That is a, that is a blended yield for a single family. The point eight one is just single family.
What are the yields across the spectrum? To Julie's point, multifamily, how varied are the yields?
I think we've got, so the single family, that's that point eight one. If you, if you look back at-
And that stayed stable, Scott.
That's relatively stable.
It was low.
No, when, when I was on redistricting the la, the last year, which was for Orange High School, it was point eight out of single families.
So, so this one kind of gives you that variance. This is just single family. And so you can see as we look, as we look by age, you know, it, it spikes at point, you know, one point, you know, one point, was it one point one or one point two? And then it evens out around, you know, point, point seven. That point eight one is that overall aggregate number across all, all, all single family housing type. The other yields to look at. Multifamily, now that's, that's everything. That's apartments, that is condominiums. We've actually started to track luxury detached condos as a separate item now, because we don't want to see that change our, our regular condo yield. I think one thing that's important to add is that the yield rate for that isn't zero. We are seeing kids out of the luxury detached condos, I think it's what, point?
Point oh five.
Yeah, point oh five versus, you know, our regular multifamily yield is, is point one eight. But when those, when those rezoning exemptions are applied, there's usually the argument that that housing type is not going to yield
Any kids.
Any kids. And I, I, I wouldn't say, you know, it, it doesn't yield a lot, but it's not zero.
Right.
That eight point eight, one point one eight blended yield, I, I ran the numbers out of all of our kids in apartments, took the condos out. It was point two. So the apartments were point two. The others aren't, we're bringing it down a little bit, but.
Yeah, I can give it to you, give you all the housing types.
I mean, it's, it's something that we definitely want to keep an eye on.
Because that has gone, that has crept up.
It's gone up. And, because I, I think it used to be closer to point one four, point one five. If you look at Bethel Road, that area, where, you know, those are, those are apartments that have been there for twenty-five or thirty years, those are closer to point three or point three five. And so it, it has the potential to have an impact, but I think it, a lot of it is going to depend on the market. So if, if those high-end apartments that are, that are on Polaris continue to be high-end and be, you know, eighteen hundred, two thousand a month in rent, those yields are going to stay low. But if you look at, if you look at Bethel Road, it's more affordable, it's in Dublin, it's, you know, Columbus, it doesn't matter to the renters, but it's Columbus taxes. And so you have a lower, lower tax rate for those operators, those yields tend to be a little higher. So I wouldn't, it's something that we need to continue to keep an eye on, but I don't, I don't see any reason to ring an alarm bell at this point for the apartments.
So if you look at the single family subdivisions and you, you took out up to twenty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-one units, you took out those that had zero yield. And then looked at that yield of those that actually have students. How disparate is that? In other words, is there an imbalance between a bunch of zero yielding units and a bunch of heavy units that skew the, the point eight one lower?
I don't.
Or, or maybe how distributed are the units?
I mean, we have it, we have it by neighborhood. Like, we have it by neighborhood that you can look at. I don't, I don't have that number at the tip of my brain, but I don't think it's going to be, anyway, if you, let me just. Let's see. I just want to look for some good ones. Okay, so Sciata Reserve is is that right? One point three?
Yeah.
Yeah, one point three, Sciata Reserve. And so if you, if you look at different samples, you're going to see different, different yields.
Yeah, I was trying to say, is there a barbell effect? You've got a bunch of zeros, a bunch of twos, threes, that blend to a point eight one?
I mean, the, the effect is, it's here. And it has to do with age. I mean, this, this is the effect.
So like Olentangie Bridge?
Yeah.
Would that be a real low yielding subdivision?
Probably today.
Today, it probably is. How Olentangie Bridge?
Point five. Eighty-five.
So Sciata Reserve is kind of in that
Right, yeah.
top of the curve.
Well, that's what you see in there, in his cloud map as it moves and the number of kids we used to get out of High Meadows, Green Meadows, numbers, kids used to get out of High, Highland Lakes was huge back in two thousand, two thousand and five. Huge, usually.
Yeah, so in summary, we're not done growing.
No.
Didn't think we were.
Some people think we're dead. Ah, where is everybody coming from? They're still coming.
But they just need to drive a little bit more. And it is hard to tell just how fast our, our, our district is, because, like I said, when I go to Galena, I feel like I'm in Cleveland, you know, it just seems so far away. I'm like, wow, this is still us, this is still us. Or, you know, when you're driving down Seventy-One, you press Food Freedom Trail and what's the next one up?
You shouldn't venture too far outside the bubble.
And I'll only go home to the bubble to sleep, so.
Great, I love this information.
She does. The highlight of her plump, I'm sure.
Yep.
Yes, that's why we did it, it says, one white wonder that we, we paid Scott, this company money to tell us we're growing. Good one.
Well, we, we do have to stay abreast of any new developments and, I, was it last year we got bombarded with all that property that switched over to residential?
Yeah.
Thousands and thousands of big.
And that's happened before, so.
And they use it for redistricting. It's very important for redistricting.
Yes.
Are you enjoying that, Karen?
Oh, yeah. I'll tell you, we had a blast the other day. It, it was so much fun.
I love that.
It was great. I should feel like, I got really excited and they got really excited. It was just like.
She was on my first redistricting.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, and before that, we did it by hand.
I'm so sorry.
Mr. Wright is, you know, on the committee, so I'm sure it's a chuckle fest, so.
We appreciate your information and sharing that with us and keeping us abreast of the development in our community. Thank you.
And Julie, I'll, I'll give that exact build out number for you.
Thank you. Yes, I like to tell people that.
Well, now we'd like to welcome to the podium Dr. Jack Fetti. He is our chief academic officer and he's going to give us an update on our committed distance learning platform. Or you could talk about property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, will we be able to put that up on the website? Because it wasn't included in the exhibits today.
It's, it's on there now.
No, on the website for the public. We got it, but the public didn't get it. Okay.
All right, good evening. I'm going to give you an update about our committed distance learning program tonight. We're nearing the end of the first semester, so wanted to make sure we keep the board and the public abreast of what's going on. So I'm going to describe our semester movement, the students who are moving attendance models at the semester break. We also took the opportunity to survey families in CDL. So I'll show you the results of our satisfaction survey and also update you on internal study that we're doing on the future opportunity for a permanent virtual school, which a lot of people have asked about, so. First, the transfers out of CDL. So originally in the summer, at the end of summer, when we asked families if they wanted to commit to CDL for the year, we asked them to commit for the entire year. And then while our enrollment was open, we heard from a lot of families that they wanted an opportunity to opt out of CDL at the semester. That a year-long commitment was too long, that the COVID unknowns were too great, and that they didn't want to give up two semesters. So we made that adjustment during the enrollment period. And we still had fifty-three hundred, a little more than fifty-three hundred students commit to CDL during summer enrollment. So before Thanksgiving, we sent them all a survey asking if they wanted to remain in CDL or transition back to their home building. Out of the fifty-three hundred students, three hundred and fifteen are electing to return to their home schools of the second semester, which is the middle of January this year. The rest of the CDL students are remaining in CDL, which is a good thing for the organization just in terms of education, right? It, more students are going to get a consistent education with the same teacher. We don't have to have dramatic staffing changes to accommodate shifting enrollment. So we were happy with that number. We're also not accommodating transfers into CDL at this semester because of the staffing limitations and class sizes. If you remember back to summer, we staffed CDL to respond to the enrollments that we had at that time. So we have class sizes at the secondary level that are over thirty. The three hundred and fifteen students are coming out K through twelve. So we're not seeing any dramatic decrease in any class size. We also know that there was a significant transition period at the start of the first semester for students to learn how to become online learners. So our teachers were very intentional about teaching students through the first few weeks about how to use the software that they're using, the online meeting software specifically, how to establish their home learning space. And we feel like that would not be setting other students up for success to ask them to join the mix right now, when the rest of the students are operating at an entirely different level and the teachers aren't equipped to onboard a whole new group of students. So the onboarding process, but primarily it's the staffing limitations and the class sizes. We can't hire, there, there's just not a, a teacher pool available right now that we can hire additional teachers either. Yes.
So I noticed three hundred and fifteen students are opting to go back to the hybrid or in-person model. What about those that did not participate in the survey, survey? What will their option be?
So, uh, leading up to the survey, we communicated about it multiple times with CDL families and told them if they did not respond to the survey, that the default would be to remain in CDL. And you'll see the exact number. We were just over four thousand responses. So about eighty percent of the, of the families did respond.
Did you know how many, did you ever find out how many were unique, how many unique families we have in CDL?
Oh, no, I didn't. You did ask me that. I'm sorry.
Well.
I always want you to, you know.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Jen, do you know the number of unique families in CDL?
Unique families.
If there's three students coming out of one household.
Okay, okay.
So you'd only give one response?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
On the survey, they had to go out for each.
Right, right, yeah, there's a unique survey for each kid, so.
Well, I could see that. Maybe the first order she would get done.
So when we asked them to let us know if they intended to continue in CDL or return to the building, we also took the opportunity to survey their perception of their experience thus far in CDL. And I can't stress enough how just great these numbers are, to the credit of Jennifer Fury there and all of her teachers in CDL. This, as you are all aware, was a very quick endeavor, right? We conjured and created CDL in a matter of weeks. And the teachers in the program have really made it meaningful for the students. So we asked them how they would rate their participation on a five-point scale. Student learning was just over a four out of five. Student sense of belonging was three point seven. Teacher-to-parent communication, four-two-four. District-to-parent communication, four-two, and overall, four point oh seven. So again, these are, you know, I felt, I was very pleased with these. with these scores. They were higher than I would have anticipated. We know that we have critical consumers in the district and we also told them that we were promising them a authentic Olentangie experience in CDL. And I know how hard everyone was working towards it, but that was a tall order. And I do feel like, you know, 80% of the students' parents who have responded say that we've met that, you know, by and large. Certainly room for growth everywhere, but just a real credit to the, to the people who are making CDL work on a day-to-day basis.
What do we think the comparable hybrid school would be?
You know, I would only be guessing because we haven't done that survey. You know, I can, my student, my two children are in hybrid and I, I think that they would be comparable. I don't, I don't feel like, my sense was that hybrid is better or worse than CDL in terms of the student experience. I think it comes down to, in a large part, the communication, right? When we, when we first went virtual in the spring, my repeated message to teachers was communicate what to expect and then deliver what you said you were going to do. And, and that's what parents want. They want to know what to expect and they want to see you doing what you said you were going to do. And I know from my experience as a parent, I have a student at Allen Creek and One at Shanahan and their teachers have done a fantastic job of communicating, tending to the student's sense of belonging, communicating to us about student learning, providing authentic feedback to both of my children. So I would guess it would be comparable, but we didn't collect it.
I would, I would venture to guess it would, because it's, it's an impersonal environment that they would be comparing it to their, what they know to be their normal in-person environment. I would guess it might even be, might be slightly skewed lower because they're comparing those two things that they're, they're used to what their, their only point of comparison was what their five-day experience would be like. These people all opted into this program.
It's a, it's a bias because they chose to go this way.
Perhaps.
Be a self-fulfilling satisfaction score.
And I think it would reflect, you know, just the personal opinion of, you know, some, half the families are very happy with the hybrid model and half of them want.
Want.
Yeah.
Every day, all day, every day. And there's, we surveyed the parents in this case. There's, you know, the university sometimes survey the kids. I talked to, I talked to a lot of kids who love their hybrid day. They love hybrid schedule, especially juniors and seniors in high school. So.
I talked to a mom this week. Her older kids were in school with my older kids and now she's got younger kids in, in the CDL program and they love it. She absolutely loves it. She says she's getting things out of her youngest daughter that she had no idea that she could do.
We, we also had a
Glad to hear that.
a survey this year of the eighth-grade CDL students through our partnership with Character Lab. And that survey wasn't the same, but student learning and sense of belonging were definitely reflected in that survey. And I feel like at the eighth-grade level, at least the student feedback on that survey validated this data, that they also felt that they were learning and that they, they had a sense of belonging that also could be stronger. So then the last question on our survey was this here, word for word. We are curious about your long-term interest in a virtual learning option in Olentangie. Imagine our world beyond the current pandemic. How likely would you be to enroll your child in a full-time virtual school in Olentangie at each of the following grade segments? So there's two sets of data here. There's the long-term interest overall, right? So you might be a fourth grade, a parent of a fourth grader answering about elementary for now, but middle school and high school for the future. Or the parent of a current high schooler with no younger siblings might have only answered the high school question. So what we did see here though is that in the somewhat likely and extremely likely categories, there's a significant amount of interest in maybe belonging to a permanent virtual school. I should say virtual school, not virtual world. Sorry about that. But then we, when we drill it down to unique enrollments, possible unique enrollments for next year. So third graders, you know, who said highly likely or extremely likely to be interested in elementary school, we plugged them into fourth grade for next year. And we see the numbers on the bottom table, 160 in the elementary, 130 at the middle school, 130 at the high school roughly. And then when you include the somewhat likelies with the extremely likelies for next year, you see that we could have school levels around, somewhere between 300 to 500 students at the elementary and middle school level and 200 to 300 students safely at the high school level. So what this tells us is that there is a pocket of families who are not only enjoying their CDL experience this year, but are interested in a virtual option long-term for the future. And then I'm going to look at here at Mr. O'Brien. At a previous meeting, you had kind of asked about the differences between Oasis and what CDL is doing, what a potential permanent virtual school could do. So Oasis, also a great program, also a virtual component, but very different than CDL in a number of ways. And one thing that we've seen here is that, what, just that we know about students, is that there are different needs for different learners. Oasis meets unique learning needs of some students. CDL is meeting unique learning needs of some students. And in-person education also meets the unique learning needs of some students. Even though maybe the majority is in person, there's still their unique needs in how they learn best. So our committed distance learning, if it were to evolve into a permanent virtual school, could incorporate elementary, middle, and high school. We would continue with what we're doing with a teacher-generated curriculum. It would be 100% virtual, as is CDL. I think we're, we've established that it's possible to be 100% virtual and never need to be in a school building. We've also established through CDL a very strong school environment. You're going to start to see in your neighborhoods, citizen of the month signs for CDL students that are funded by our buildings, principals. Each contributed money to, to allow the CDL teachers to acknowledge their students as citizen of the month. And most, you know, perhaps importantly, as it relates to the previous presentation, there would be no enrollment in the homeschool. Currently in the CDL model, those students still belong to their homeschool building and we gave them a, an option to leave at the semester. If there were to be a permanent virtual school, it would be a school that you commit to for a year at a time that you opt into and you opt out of your homeschool. Oasis comparatively is a secondary-only program, has a very intimate atmosphere of, you know, they try to stay under 200 students. Both of them have a strong community, but it's just a smaller population there. Oasis is a computer-based program that's self-paced, so students can progress at their own pace. There is an in-person component to Oasis where the students go to the Oasis facility for part of the day. Most of the students do. And those students are also allowed to continue to enroll in courses at their home high school. If we were to create a virtual school, there's a possibility that we would, again, remove those students from their home high school in terms of coursework entirely, potentially alleviating enrollment. In this permanent virtual school model that we're, that we're studying, there's definitely a way for these students to still participate in extracurriculars at their home high school though. In the same way that homeschool students can participate in our extracurriculars at the assigned building of attendance, the permanent virtual school students would be able to do that as well.
Can we go back to the previous slide for a minute? So is it fair to say, so if you had total interest at 13, 14 for elementary and say 12, 57 for high school, that would somewhat apply as equal levels of interest between elementary and high school? But it's probably not fair to say that because the 13, 14 would be over base of K through 5, which is a bigger segment of the population, than 9 through 12, which is a smaller segment. If you did it as a percent of the population, you'd probably have more interest in middle high than elementary. Isn't that fair?
We're, I do K12.
Because you get six grades, two grades, four grades. If you do it just as a number of people versus the percentage of eligible, you may get a different answer.
So let me see if I understand correctly. So of our 4,000 respondents, about 3,000 are currently in elementary school, but they were.
But instead of the respond, it's not a, yeah.
Yeah, so they responded about what's your future interest in a virtual elementary? What's your future interest in a middle school? And then in the high school? So each, it depended on where you currently sat. And again, they answered multiple times if they had multiple kids coming out of the house. So they may have answered for the perspective of each individual child or, you know. It's, it's not a perfect science, right? In terms of this long-term interest shows that there's a lot of households that are interested in virtual school long-term. It doesn't say anything beyond that. The, the permanent, or the potential unique enrollments for next year, those are, where we pinpointed them to where they are now and where they would be next year. The one thing that the long-term interest showed us too is that there is a dramatic growth in interest as we get to our younger students, presumably our younger parents, that there is a real paradigm shift amongst the adults who, I was speaking with Mindy and Julie about this, you know. I didn't, I've never taken an online college class myself. And perhaps you haven't either.
I did.
You teach online college classes, right? They're growing in popularity and I think the more people who experience them and then who also have experienced an online high school class, depending on how young they are, have a different perception of what to expect and what is possible in the virtual space. So we are seeing that as a growing interest among our, our younger students' parents, presumably our younger parents that we didn't ask their ages. So the other thing that we, I did with these numbers is I said, okay, you know, what's the minimum, right? If we, if the, if we did this next year with roughly 200 to 300 students per grade level, you know, or per grade span, you know, how can we do that? Is that possible? There's always an assumption that if you're doing it virtually, you're doing it for free. That's not the case. But then we also looked at, okay, if we offer it in Olentangie, we've proven that when we offer a program, we do it really well and interest typically seems to grow over time. So what if we got up to that 1,000 students per grade span? What would that look like? So here's two different virtual cost models that we worked out. At the left is the 500-student cost model. So this is assuming about 50 students per grade, 3 through 12. And as we're discussing this, I'm saying 3 through 12 because there's additional challenges at primary, at K12, that I'm not sure that we can confidently predict our ability to be successful with right now. We certainly have classrooms in K12 that are doing a great job in CDL, but I think if we're designing a virtual school for the long term, it's important to get those students into our schools first, get to know them, that bring their technology skills up to a minimum level, to bring their literacy skills up to a minimum level because there is a very strong requirement for some independence on the part of the learner, even at elementary. So if we go 50 students, grades 3 through 12, that would require 35, 33 certified staff roughly in the model that I used. Bringing our ratio to about 15.15 to 1. As you recall, in our continuous improvement plan, we always like to be above 15 and a half. So in, using our forecasting costs only, in a, in a certified staffing cost, that's about $2.5 million. And then Mrs. Hatfield looked at the amount we're losing currently to virtual charters. That was about $800,000. Mr. Meyer looked at what's possible with absorbed staff, about $800,000 in savings if we were to absorb staff from a, a, our traditional model into the CDL model. Now, those are all potential. It depends on, obviously, a lot of factors, but that's the, the outline of the cost model we have for the 500 student. On the other end of things, at a 1,400-student model based on those, that long-term interest number with about 400 to 500 students per grade band, we estimate 90 certified staff, brings our ratio just above where we like to be at 15.55. Total staffing cost, just south of $7 million. And same potential savings with the charters, the virtual charters. And the absorbed staff savings, the potential's a little bit higher because you'd be taking more students out of the schools, increasing the likelihood of being able to take some staff that could transfer with them. So again, we're going to continue to study this and evaluate whether this is an option that we think makes sense in Olentangie. One thing we're certain is that there is a cost, but we're also certain that there is, there is a desire for students to, for families to have this option. It does, we've seen meet the unique learning needs of some students. You just referenced families that you know that are having a wonderful experience. One of our OEF board members, I had a meeting with yesterday and her children are in CDL. And I asked her, you know, what, how did you answer the survey? She never would have thought that this was something that they would be interested in, but it's really uncovered something in them. And she's not, you know, I said, tell me what your day looks like. Her children are upstairs doing their work. She's not hovering over them, doing it for them. And they're thriving. One of the most powerful things I've heard out of the middle school is that the parents have seen the anxiety of their children decrease so dramatically. When you're not in that, for some of these students, where they're not in the traditional school environment, they're having a little more control over who they're interacting with. We know how peer pressure and that can impact especially adolescents. And those students are having a bit more of a controlled environment and that's been seen as a real positive for some of the students. In no way would this replace Oasis. Oasis is a fantastic program, meeting, again, the unique needs of those students. But it's also not redundant with Oasis in any way. So I wanted to review that with you. And then lastly, I wanted to show you, Ms. Fury is in a, in a collaborative group with districts around the area and we've asked them where they're at with, you know, are they planning on adding to or expanding their virtual schools as a result of what they're learning this year? So most of the districts that we heard back from are adding or expanding their virtual schools. Not all with the same model. I think it's important to note, you know, we do things in Olentangie, the Olentangie way, which, you know, might be different than the Dublin way or the Hilliard way. We respond to the needs of our community. I am confident if we were to do this, we would be doing it better than anything that I've seen done thus far. I've, you know, in planning CDL, we've tried to study all the existing virtual schools that we can. And I'm very proud of what Jen's put together and what those teachers are doing because it is an authentic Olentangie experience. And that's really hard to come by, I think, in the virtual world. I haven't seen another school that I would say, give me what they have, you know, all the way through and put our label on it. So I think that's my last slide. You guys have any other questions about CDL that I can?
So the only observation, Julie, I, we talked about this, about CDL versus traditional, is the real cost savings comes from cost avoidance of future brick and mortar. Because you've got the building you have today, you've got the brick and mortar you have today. The more you push off the virtual, you're avoiding future building versus eliminating current current capital.
Right.
And it also shows up very differently in our financials because the operating fund covers all the operating costing. Whereas the students are here at virtual, the operations are relatively similar. Where you say money is in the capital fund versus the operating fund in terms of not issuing debt for buildings.
Yeah, we felt-
How it shows up is very different.
Yeah, it's really hard to quantify too, right? Some of that cost avoidance. We talked about that in DLT that, you know, every, every virtual kid is a stop that a bus doesn't have to make that, that stretches that bus route that much further, that's less copy paper in the building, that's, that's, uh, that many fewer students until you get to the next contractual ratio where you add a school counselor. So there are real, um, potential cost savings through that avoidance for sure.
I have a couple of questions. Okay. Um, first, let's go back to the current CDL this year. Let's look at this year. Um, so you had stated that hybrid students can't go into the CDL program.
Correct.
Just because of staffing and the learning curve. What about if we purchased the, the program where you're learning without the teacher? What does that count?
Uh, the one that we looked at was-
Yeah. I don't even remember the cost, but-
Edgenuity.
Yeah. You know, where they're basically, they're not with a teacher. A teacher might be making sure they're on track, but it's not the same.
Right, correct.
Is that even an option or?
So we would still have to staff that because there still needs to be a teacher tied to those courses. The teacher's not creating the curriculum or delivering the content on a regular basis as much. Um, so they, uh, whereas in a classroom, we like to say, you know, roughly 25 students per teacher, they, they might be able to serve 30, 35, 40 students. Um, but we still don't have staffing to do that currently.
Okay.
We don't have any teachers who are under assigned at the moment who could pick that up. If anyone was interested in that model, you know, typically we don't promote homeschool or, you know, that's, that's a parent's choice and we just, we're the public school, but there are those programs available for anyone who is trying to avoid physically attending school and frustrated with the, you know, with that decision virus.
Yep. And then thinking forward, because after I had talked to you about this program, I started thinking more entrepreneurially to see if this could work. And I was thinking, okay, could we offer it as open enrollment? Because if we do open enrollment, we collect $6,020 from each student that would come into the district from, away from our district. Um, so if someone in big wallet wanted to do our online program, but we would have to offer open enrollment in our in-school program too. We can't just make it an online. So we don't have room to do that. So that's why we can't do that. And I still haven't been able to figure out the charter school thing because public schools are allowed to sponsor charter schools, but I think it, there is an academic component, like you have to, like you have to be below a certain level or, because there aren't any charter schools in Delaware County.
Right.
For a reason. But I was thinking, okay, if we opened up our own online charter school, because we've got, you know, 47 kids going to Ohio Virtual Academy right now, you know? Um, but I don't think we can do that.
Legally.
Yeah, legally. So we looked at that, but-
And open enrollment has its-
Well, I was thinking about where you're going.
I know.
Um, yes. Uh, which is a sticky situation to get into. Um, but at what point do we have to make a decision to go? Because we're already hiring, we're going to start hiring for this new elementary school. You know, so at what point do we have to make a decision, we're going to go because we need to tell teachers, okay, who wants to go teach CDL next year? Who wants to stay in the classroom? Cause at some point you gotta make that call.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the clock's ticking on that. It, it basically would have to follow the same timeline that we followed for Elementary 16. Um, it would be effectively opening a new school in terms of building staff, curriculum, resources, all of those things. So, uh, that all gets underway here in middle of January.
So what's a drop dead? Like if we would have to say no or yay or nay?
I mean, for me, it's, it's the end of this month.
Middle of January.
But I, I also don't want people to think, okay, you know, at this point, it's not like, okay, we have this elementary under roof now, we won't need it. Because we will need it. It's not going to be enough students to stop the buildings that we have on the drawing board. But it might, you know, for these students that we just figured out are going to be here in 2030, you know, it might slow down that building, but that's the big unknown.
Well, I, you know, if we, if we did go this way, if you look at the differential of, um, on the small, small model of, you know, again, the, the staffing, uh, model is very, very complicated.
Yeah.
It's just not an easy wash. 500 kids are coming out of the building mix, so we're just moving the equivalent divided by 25 number of teachers. Cause you're talking with the high schools, it's, you know, limited electives, but you have to have elective offerings, which, which of those are we're going to add? You know, so let's just say we start on this process, let's, we're going to do it for the high school. Well, but now here are the electives. Well, now I'm not sure I'm going to do it.
Oh, we're not offering calculus AB.
So we're, you know, then you get back and forth on that, but, but, I mean, I think if we're going to do it, we have to realize that, and, and, and again, there are an infinite number of programs that people want in our district. People want American Sign Language. People want-
Chinese.
Chinese language. And people, I mean, there are a lot of other programs people want that we just can't add to our academic program because of costs. While this, people may believe this to be just the shifting of costs, there is additional costs initially as, as, as we started up. I think they get more in line as we, you know, build it out. But again, as we try to do everything, try to give everybody everything, everything they ask for. Uh, you know, it's, it's one of those things where the easy answer is not, we're not going to do it. Got too much other stuff going on, that's the easy answer. And, and again, I don't think that's typically what we do here and try to figure things out if that's what people really want. So we're going to continue to discuss it. Um, I, I, the only way we're going to do it is to start small and build it right, see, see what, what that true interest is and whether or not it'd be sustainable. Um, because I do think there's, once you, once you get into those cost numbers, you have to decide, is this sustainable? So, um, cause again, if it keeps just eating into our, our general fund and now it makes the next levy number undesirable, something's got to go.
And would these teachers be teaching in a classroom here, in a, in a building here or at their homes?
I mean, obviously not decided yet, but right now the CDL teachers are teaching from their homes and, um, that's largely been very successful.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, you know, first I want to note that with only 300 and, I have received multiple emails about, oh, I'd like to opt-in. People, you know, they're, they're watching the COVID numbers go up and they're feeling, you know, anxious about that. And, um, that just goes to show you'd, we'd have to have a whole lottery system to get new people in and then there's that learning curve. So I greatly appreciate your explanation of that this evening. Um, you know, I know there's, you guys designed a whole curriculum program, like, you know, very, very quickly on the fly. And so I know that we, there's a lot of data that we have not yet been able to capture. But what is of interest to me is how are those kids with anxiety doing? Like, is it definitely lessening? Um, I personally, my anxiety goes through the roof with technology, so I would, I would be the opposite, but I can see, you know, where it takes a lot of the pressure off and, and then the kids that are leaving, like, what grades are they?
Um, it's pretty even, really across the spectrum. Um, no, you know, uh, I think Orange High School saw the most students returning, the 25.
Oh, so it's not like a big mass ex-
No, it's, it's, you know, most of the elementaries took back five to 10. Um, so it, it's pretty, you know, they're individual decisions, right? There's no, the evidence doesn't suggest that it's because it's working better at one level than another. It's just, you know, whatever that individual student wants.
And in special education, is that, I, I would think that the challenges would be much more significant in that platform or is it?
Like with everything else, certain things are more challenging and we're finding other things are actually easier. Um, I spoke with our Assistant Director of People Services today, who just had a meeting with, um, speech pathologists. And a couple of them were just raving about how successful, uh, it is to do speech pathology, speech, uh, therapy virtually and that they think that there's a real, there's something that, that should be, uh, we should consider permanently just in that field, um, that there's some benefit to it. So as far as your, your question about, um, social emotional wellbeing, I don't know that I have any additional data.
Right.
Certainly the eighth grade character lab, um, results have some, but we, our teachers are proactively, um, addressing student wellbeing in their lessons. It's one of the top priorities that Jen put out for all the teachers to address regularly. We have resources available to them, the school counselors, the social workers are all accessible. So just because the students are virtual doesn't mean that we're not giving them the same support that we are the students in the building. So, uh, again, I don't have the exact data, but anecdotally, I would say that it's no, there, there's no red flags there.
Yeah. Another question. I greatly appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I just was sitting here thinking that how, what enrollment is in each of our high schools. And Ms. Fury has more students than that. All, all four of those principals standing and, you know, and there's her. So I commend you on your job. I, I can only imagine how challenging it's been this year. And I will add one story that I was getting my hair done and my hairdresser has a blood clotting disorder, so she's hyper vigilant and her kids have not done anything, second grade, fifth grade. I said, how's it going? She's like, my kids are doing amazing, they're thriving. I said, really? How, what about, you know, being disconnected? She goes, oh no, they all have group friends from their online school that they go on in the evenings.
Yes.
Video games and-
That's what the mom told me too.
She's like, they're doing amazing.
Yeah.
So, um, that was a really nice story.
They have friends they wouldn't have even known.
Exactly. You know, yeah. So they're, she's really enjoying it and she's like, I, you know, I think about if I could just keep them there, but what would I miss from the in-school experience and, you know, at what age group? But she's thoroughly enjoying it. And I asked about the technology because she's not a tech savvy person either and she's like, well, when I'm working my second grader and I don't know, you know, she gets stuck on something, I call my son and he just, it's second nature to these kids. So when they have had enough exposure to it, they're really quite amazing with their technology skills.
That kind of question. So in the CDL then, the kids can see each other?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, the platform that they use for video conferencing is Microsoft Teams. So they have the ability to turn their own camera on or off. So there are times where they'll have whole group meetings. They can also have individual conversations, you know, uh, one student can connect with another student virtually. And we have lots of safety precautions or safety protocols in place through our technology department to track anything, you know, that's ever typed that's inappropriate.
Is that an additional license set that teachers in CDL have to have for that?
No, I believe it's the standard that we have with, with our district. We had it going into this.
And how, how is technology doing maintaining when everybody's online like that? Does it crash frequently, you know, with the user volume?
Well, because they're all, um, from their own homes, they're in different networks, so that, that really helps. Overall, I mean, technology's been great. Mr. Saxon would tell you that his help desk is a help desk for parents now as well. And certainly testing their capacity, but, um, you know, anytime we identify technology issues, which as always there are, we've been able to address them, correct them and move on from them, so.
We have them in my office, so, you know.
I use it.
Yeah.
You, you use Teams already?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Sure. All right, well, that concludes our presentations this evening. And tonight I would like to share with you my final report as president. It's many pages long because I do not want to disappoint. I would love to sit here tonight and say it was a pleasure to serve, but this was a year of twists and turns and our community was very divided along the way. And what I like to do in the role of president is I like to get out there and I like to visit our schools, look at new and innovative programming and what our staff is doing with our students, um, attend events and wasn't able to do that. I felt like my job this year was to listen. So I guess the more accurate statement would be, it was a pleasure to listen. And what I can genuinely sit before you and say to my fellow board members is, it was a true pleasure to work with all of you, um, whom I deeply respect, your various skillsets, your perspectives and your, um, ability to stay focused on the big picture and support our administration and make decisions accordingly. So thank you for all your service and I am so proud to be a member of this Board of Education. Um, where I want to spend the majority of my focus is on thanking the administrators, the teachers and the staff for the work that they performed this year. I still remain in complete amazement of their collaboration and their commitment to our students and their gallant effort to navigate this pandemic. Um, I can't name all the people and their amazing efforts, but as a board member, I particularly wanted to state my gratitude to, to the following. Number one, our back-to-school committee. Um, these groups were crucial to getting our students back into school because the pandemic did not come with a guidebook. The collaboration and cooperation of our associations, none of which we couldn't accomplish anything without their partnerships. Our teachers for getting up every day despite their fears and doing what they can for our students. They are doing what I feel is the most difficult platform and, especially those in, well, I can't even say, because hybrid has such unique challenges and CDL has a whole different set of challenges, but they never stop trying and they are giving our students that sense of normalcy. Um, I'd like to thank our, like, building principals and administrators because they just kept the train moving. I know when they came back to school, it was really overwhelming and there were so many obstacles, but they continued to keep that culture in which they've established. I'd like to thank Olin Tangi for kids because I think the hardest part of, um, all of this are levies and that levy cycle is exhausting and we extended it through the three months this year. So it's emotionally and physically draining and I am forever grateful in the work, um, that our volunteers did, to all the coffee chats and updates that our treasurer and our superintendent did when they were beyond tired. Mr. Rafe, you made some pretty tough decisions this year. As I've said before, I felt like you were a much stronger leader than our governor was, so we thank you for that. Mr. Gordon, our Director of Facilities, um, this department, they planned for new schools, they waited, they're ready to go, they waited and then, oh, go, you're behind schedule. On top of that, he had to staff all of our buildings with, um, PPE equipment and, um, find a new site for Elementary 16. I mean, just the amount of work that everybody has done over and above a normal year is incredible. All that wouldn't have been possible without our architects and our construction manager, Bruce Runan and Bill O'Sullivan. And our district leadership team, they literally rewrote the playbook this year. And they always acted in the best, in the best interest of our students and staff. And they have the hardest jobs of anyone I know other than frontline workers on that in the hospitals. Our diversity and inclusion department, it was a really challenging year in our country and in our community and they continue to work forward towards our mission of diversity and inclusion here at Olin Tangi. Our technology department, I don't even know enough to say what they did because we switched to 5G, we've added devices, we added a new learning platform and, um, as Mr. Rafe indicated, the help desk is probably beyond crazy. Our communications department, um, I, I bet your workload tripled, quadrupled this year and communication during a pandemic is the lifeline and, um, you all worked tirelessly. Our treasury department, um, they as always had an outstanding audit, but they also had to help work with curriculum for our CDL model to make sure those needs were met. And, um, a lot of CARES Act fund tracking, um, on top of, let's reissue a bunch of bonds and build a building. So what all these things have in common are they take partnerships and collaboration, none of which would happen without that. So the attitude and commitment here at Olin Tangi is contagious. It's a culture of positivity and a can-do attitude. So I sit before you with 100% certainty that the people in this building care deeply. Our principals, they care deeply. Our teachers care deeply. Our custodians, our food service workers and our bus drivers care deeply and no one wants this virus spread on their watch. So, thank you. It was a pleasure. That was long, but guess what? You don't have to listen to me anymore, except for the rest of this meeting. So with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Very, very nice. It was a pleasure.
So- Just if I left anybody out.
I think you got them. You got them all.
Okay.
So as I always like to start with our living the mission slides, um, Mr. Jura, John Jurovich at Liberty Tree Elementary School, there was a program to, um, request to submit and create ornaments for our national parks. in the President's Park in Washington DC. So Mr. Juravich submitted an application and was selected. Again, all that guy does is go above and beyond. So our students' ornaments are being displayed in the Christmas tree in President's Park. We celebrated the Native American and Indigenous Peoples Heritage Month last month and the holiday of the Wali. And so all of our buildings all learned about the diverse cultures through those lessons last month. We, our food service team is still hard at it. You see there, we packaged 3,664 lunches and breakfast and served 916 students during the Thanksgiving break. And now we have additional 2,150 students signed up to receive meals over winter break. So thanks to Mrs. Lenko and her team for that continued great work. We had our staff professional development on Monday, the 30th, and it centered on implicit bias and how it impacts students in our district. We used a lot of student voice in the professional development. As always, that team, the curriculum team that puts that together does a great job. We had 1,116 surveys returned and it was, I just lost the number, about 92% positive feedback. So that's, I think, real strong again. And obviously a very important topic. This is just something that never ceases to amaze me and again, especially in the times of pandemic. But our kids are just so, our students and staff are just so incredibly generous. So there's some examples of things that are going on during the holiday season. Food and clothing donation drives, they create handmade items. But, you know, having on there that we're learning about giving to others. But I think it's just something, we, again, just, we have a very, very blessed and generous community and our kids are easily drawn into these types of activities. So I'm gonna do, actually, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Davis to join me to do a quick update on our COVID, oh, maybe not so quick, update on the COVID dashboard.
Yeah, it's not maybe as quick as he thinks, maybe. Good evening. This slide just gives a quick overview of what is included in our dashboard. We are now updating the data on the dashboard on both Mondays and Fridays to give a three-day snapshot and a four-day snapshot of our active cases. That data, active cases includes confirmed, probable, and suspect cases. It considers those active and then quarantines are there as well. We have a link on our site for the Ohio Department of Health. Their data, which is published every Thursday with information that was reported from the previous Sunday. And they also collect information from all the different counties that touch our district, where our staff reside. Our students also encompass Delaware and Franklin County. So that link is updated, as I said, on Thursdays. And then on November 20th, we began including the Ohio State's CATS data, the COVID-19 analytics and targeted surveillance data, which we're gonna talk about a little bit more in depth here in a second. And then the, one of the other couple of things that the dashboard is now including is a link to the health district's quarantine release form on our dashboard. So the health district would really like us to encourage people to use that form when they're looking for documentation to return to school or work. Again, this dashboard provides the most accurate snapshot of the current cases in our district on that given date. It is not cumulative data and cumulative data can be found at the Ohio Department of Health link.
Can you touch base again on the form? So if a student, whether they're in quarantine or a positive case, they have to have a form to return to school, correct?
Yes, they need to have a release from the Delaware Public Health District. And the health district has found that this form is probably the most helpful way for them to get that request. So individuals calling their emergency line has clogged up their phone lines. So they really want us to encourage. And so we've put a pop-up window. When you go to our dashboard, you'll see the pop-up window talking about the, not using the emergency phone number and then also using the form. So the CATS dashboard, you, again, can find that link right on our dashboard. And we're going to share a couple of slides here to show you what information is included. One of the first charts you'll find on our dashboard, or the CATS dashboard, is related to student absences. So this is a screenshot from today. I'd like to point out that today is probably the worst day to share this data with you because tomorrow it will be updated. It's updated on Fridays. So this is, you know, the least accurate you'll see, but tomorrow morning, check it out. I'd like to point out that student absences related to COVID are tracked and could mean anything like isolation, quarantine, self-quarantine to visit a sick relative, going to get a test, waiting on test results, woke up with a sore throat and waiting to see if it develops or goes away. Say you have to visit your orthodontist or some other medical doctor that requires you to self-quarantine for 48 hours prior to entering their facility. Those are all COVID attendance-related absences. And so I'd like to make sure we're aware of that when we're considering student absences. One-half of a percent of our students are out for a COVID-related reason or absent for a COVID-related reason. Student COVID-related absences have doubled from a half a percent to 1% throughout November. So 1% of our student population is approximately 220 students. That may be of interest to you. Additionally, also realize that there is a two-week lag in data as we look at this. This snapshot is our student nurse visits. Something to note here is there's been a steady decline for COVID symptoms at going to the clinic in our buildings. We could speculate that that could be that folks are being more cautious in keeping their kids home when they have symptoms. Hard to say. This slide shows a daily case comparison between Delaware County and then our school district, everyone who resides in our attendance boundaries. So you can see roughly our lines track similarly, but they're using different numbers on the access there. So it's not an exact comparison, but it does show you the comparison between the county and our district attendance boundaries. Please note, this is a rate. This part of the dashboard shows a rate of cases and our rate is slightly higher than Delaware County's rate. And then finally, there are other pieces of the dashboard that may be of interest to you, but this is the last one we'll share here. This piece of the dashboard shows the age distribution over the last two weeks. 2% of elementary students are impacted, 3.5% of middle school, and 9% of high, I'm sorry. I always do that. Of all the cases, 2% are elementary, 3.5% are middle school, and 9% are high school. So students and teachers combined make up roughly 79% of cases, which makes sense since we span a wide range of ages across students to adults in the district. So that is the dashboard in a nutshell. I would also just like to take one more second to address the notifications. I encourage everyone to view the video and the information shared on our dashboard that talks about when we notify individuals. So we send a building notification every 24 hours when we have either a suspect, probable, or positive case in that building. And then we send classroom letters to every impacted classroom for that particular case. So in the instance of secondary education, you may have somebody who receives multiple letters for the same case, depending on the schedule that your child follows. So, and the bus that they ride. So we are going the extra mile to make sure we notify everyone that has been in a space with a potential case or a positive case.
Thank you for that clarification. Obviously, there's a lot of information. We want to get as much information out there in the public's hands and to our staff and all of our families so that they can, they understand how closely we're tracking all this as we continue to move forward. As always, to highlight a few of our action items. Top of the list here, we have the employment of Mrs. Greta Janagi for principal for Elementary 16. Ms. Janagi is with us today.
Yay!
Come on, you can stand up and say hello. So I'm very, very proud to have Greta be joining the principal team. She's been in the district for 20 years. I don't even know how many different elementary schools she worked at. Quite a few. Currently is the assistant principal at Orange Middle School and done an outstanding job there. So we're very, we know she's just gonna do a great job creating the school culture and learning environment at our Elementary 16. What are we naming that school?
January.
All right.
January.
Yeah, I'm sure they can't wait to get a mascot. So another highlight, another highlight of the agenda is that we are recommending the approval of our substitute teacher rate from $100 a day to $125 today. As you know, our substitute teachers are employed by the ASCO. And, you know, it's, we've fallen behind in this area again. We're well below the average for Central Ohio and competition to attract subs is pretty intense. Just guys, we're during the meeting, got texts from two neighboring districts who were in hybrid this week and next and are planning to be in hybrid this week and next and are going to full remote because of the lack of availability of subs for their staff. So we want to position ourselves moving forward to be in line, to be the most attractive option for subs. Now, is that consistent, Mr. Meyer, with Central Ohio schools?
Yeah, Career Center just raised it to 125.
We have, seems like we have an easement almost every meeting. But they're doing some widening in Liberty High School. In Indian Springs Elementary School, they're doing some road widening. So Delco Water is requesting an easement. And Delco's been a great, they were a great partner with us on Elementary 16, providing the water line for, so that amount appears to be fairly low. Delco did give us significant work at the site for Elementary 16. So that's why we're being good partners with this easement. We are replacing the chiller at Scioto Ridge Elementary School. So there is a purchase for that. And then resolution to negotiate and enter a contract with Robertson Construction, who is currently our construction manager at risk for Elementary 16. But we're recommending that they be approved for the construction of our security vestibules and playground upgrades. And obviously, you know, Mr. Gordon has at least three full-time jobs under his responsibilities. So this one's pretty, is a very, very large scope. So having a construction manager at risk makes sense to get these done since we're gonna be very aggressive and do all, how many buildings get security, 11?
16 with elementary and 15 playgrounds.
16, 16 security vestibules and the playgrounds. So with that, our last day of class is next Friday and we are gonna do everything possible to hang on here for those last five days in our hybrid model. And then classes resume on January 4th, followed by our board organizational meeting and next regular business meeting on January 14th. So with that, I'll take any questions. Yes, Mrs.?
Well, you just said, we come back to school on January 4th. And can you reiterate what learning plan we will be on, on January 4th? Because apparently there was some kind of press release that was put out on social media that we don't get. But apparently people thought we were voting on something tonight.
So we'll be on the same plan that we said we'd be on on July 28th. That we said we'd, and, you know, again, and I know it's stressful for some people to not know what's going to happen in the future. But again, none of us have this crystal ball. We said we were gonna continue to analyze it. We did that at four weeks and gave an update. We did that at nine weeks and gave an update and said we were gonna stay on that plan until January 19. So when we come back in, on January 4th, I will have an update at the January 14th board meeting on where we're going after January 19. I just, you know, I go back to, and I say this all, I mean, the first plan we announced was January 13th, was to come all in. And that should have been an indication to everybody that that's where I want to be. I want us to be all in, full-time. We realized that was very aggressive, probably too aggressive. And so we started this hybrid. And we openly admit that the hybrid's not perfect. We're gonna continue to try to work to get better at everything we're doing in the hybrid. But I do believe our students are learning in our hybrid model. I was at Scioto Ridge Elementary School, the literacy support teacher who monitors their AIMS Web data says the AIMS Web data is on par with where it's been in the past. So, you know, again, I keep getting, we're gonna have an analysis of more of that data since we've had more time to collect it throughout first semester. You know, we've stayed the course for everything that we said we were gonna do and that's what I continue to plan to do, is see what the data looks like. I think, you know, again, I thought we'd be coming back about four weeks in. I thought we'd be coming back about nine weeks in. But I think, again, in hindsight, it was prudent to stay the course because you see what's happened all throughout Central Ohio. People keep moving back in and out of hybrid, remote. And I think that is very stressful for families and it's very stressful for our staff. So I'm proud of the plan that we've been able to stay the course as we've worked through this. So the next update will be January 14. It's interesting, though, just as a final note on that. I was on a phone call and while I was on the phone call, and a 15-minute phone call, I got six emails. Two demanding we go full-time, 100% in-person, five-day-a-week learning. Two demanding we follow, it was right around the time OEA put out their press release about demanding to be full-remote. Two demanding that we go full-remote, which, again, our association, teacher association president was not in agreement with that report from OEA and we're very appreciative of that. And I got two emails thanking us for being on the hybrid schedule. And on one phone call. So, and I considered them all equally. Thank you for your feedback.
And then just one more question. The CDC changed their quarantine parameters and I know that it's up to the health district. Are they?
So I was on a call with the health commissioner today and they are not, see, I think you have to really look at what those CDC guidelines say. The media released it as this blanket statement that the guy, or reported it, that the guidelines have been reduced from 14 to 10 days. And if you are five days into your quarantine and you get a test and it's negative, that it's, you can be released in within seven days. That is not entirely accurate. So our health commissioner is still sticking with 14 days of quarantine. And, you know, we work with them to try to put people, to help them put people in quarantine as quickly as we know there's a case. So as soon as we know someone's a close contact and we have a good sense that the health district is going to, like in a sports team. There is a positive case in a sports team, we know there's gonna be close contacts. a sports team, we know there's going to be close contacts, we contact those kids and the families and say, we know the Health District's going to, we suspect they're going to make you a quarantine. Quarantine yourself till you hear from the Health District, because that starts their clock running. And the faster we start the clock, the faster we get them back. Speaking from experience. So, it's just, no, and we, we don't put anybody in quarantine, we can't take anybody out of quarantine. Mr. Wright, Ms. Davis monitor those lists very closely. Dr. Fettig, they're all over involved, I mean, they're just, it's 90% of their jobs right now. And if we know somebody is, like, we know when they went to quarantine, we know their anticipated data coming out of quarantine, we'll take, we'll get, we'll allow them to come back to school even if they haven't got their letter from the Health District. So, you know, in our communications with the Health District, we're all trying to not keep people in quarantine, who shouldn't be in quarantine.
But you can't test out of quarantine.
No.
Say that again, he can't.
You can't test out of quarantine.
Like, you can't get a test on day seven and say, I'm negative, get me out of quarantine.
You gotta say it all the time.
And other, you know, there's 113 Health Commissioners in the state of Ohio and they are all, all over the board, just like, just like, you know.
School Districts.
Just like, just like the sports conversation that's now flooding your email inboxes about return to play in sports. We, we, I've been debating it with my colleagues across Central Ohio. We have healthy team, where we have healthy teams who are able to compete, why not get in as many games as we can right now while kids are healthy, while we don't have cases? There's no evidence that it's, that the case spread is actually happening while we're playing sports. And then, you know, the Academy of Pediatricians releases a statement, they think it's a good idea for kids to wear masks while they're playing in a contest. Okay, where's the evidence? Where's the, where's the, you know, reviewed research on, I, just saying, yeah, that's a, it's always a good idea to wear the mask as much as you possibly can. But I don't see how it can, the minute the mask gets wet, it's no longer effective, how that can be, how a basketball player can run up and down a court wearing a mask. So, we're going to have to debate whether or not we're going to follow. Again, there's a lot of recommendations, we can choose what we want to follow. And those are some of the decisions that we have to make. But our intention is to try to play sports for as long as we possibly can, with as many spectators socially distanced as we possibly can. Any others? All right, go. Turn it over.
Yes, Mrs. Hatfield, your treasurer's report, please.
Always a lively conversation when we have to address community expectations on our education model. You know, and it is divisive, but thank you to Mr. Raven and all of the leadership who continue to be diligent and respectful of all those different opinions in the midst of trying to do what's best for our students. Kudos to you because that's quite a task. What I have for you tonight are a couple of points that I just wanted to talk about as updates. The Fair School Funding Plan is a big legislative item that I wanted to update because we've been talking about it, I think for the last quarter at least, as House Bill 305 was reintroduced for the Fair School Funding Plan, trying to change the formulaic model that the state has for educating or supporting the fiscal responsibility in educating our students. Went through the House, it passed the House by a landslide vote, I would say. I think it was 84 positive and 4 negative. Is that right, Julie?
It was.
It was phenomenal, just.
Yeah.
Very excited, very happy to see the support of the Fair School Funding Plan through the House. Unfortunately, the companion bill, Senate Bill 376, as you can see on the slide, I had that it was stalled. That was when I put the slide together, it actually has been shut down, for lack of a better description, in the Senate. And they are not taking any testimony and have pushed it off as a strictly budgetary item and are no longer going to support that. So, to be determined on what our state funding might look like for schools in the next biennium. They will start the biennium budget cycle in January. They'll take a look at their budgets, where they want to be, how are they going to fund things? And that will help determine our two-year funding cycle from the state. What I do know about the state economic stance is that revenues are coming in higher than anticipated. OBM has just released their November reports and they have quite a few updates for us that are positive, coming in, income and revenue coming in higher than they had anticipated. So, we're hopeful that that'll continue to be pushed through the cycle and hopefully maybe fund school districts a little higher, but that's yet to be determined. So, we'll wait for that budget cycle to happen and we'll keep giving you updates as we know about it. And then action items, we have several action items on the agenda for this evening. We have October financials, amended appropriations, board meeting minutes, donations, and then a purchase in accordance with ORC 5705. So, let me kind of take a step back and go through each of those for you. Our October financials, we are in line with where we thought we would be. We know that the deadline for collections in Delaware County in terms of real estate taxes was pushed back into August. And so, we finally got our settlement, our final settlements in the month of October, which is good. That's very late compared to what we usually see. Traditionally, without any delays or extensions in collections, we have that final settlement August, early September at the latest. But we did get that concluded. We are ahead of budget, as we previously discussed when we talked about the five-year forecast. We're roughly thinking that we're going to be about $700,000 higher overall for the fiscal year. And we'll update the forecast at that time in May to reflect that. House Bill 164, Section 19, that is our, the unrestricted grants and aid, of course, it gave us back $2 million for fiscal year 21 from our state funding budget cuts. So, we'll continue to see that anomaly show as a variance until we add the November forecast update to our financial statements and you'll see that variance disappear. Retirement and benefits, we're seeing a variance related to SERS, which is the retirement system for our classified staffing. We did not have an additional employer balance due this month as we traditionally have had in the past. We are now paying that rather than on a report that is delayed or an estimation, we're paying that based on actual amounts due. And so, we've caught the balance up and will no longer have those catch-up payments moving forward. But that catch-up payment was in our estimations previously. So, we'll see that settle out and be an item that we no longer have to track. We have spent our coronavirus relief funds, our CRF funds. We had just over a million dollars that are posting in Fund 510. So, you won't see that in general fund. Again, as we talk through the forecast, these are the set-aside funds that we received as grant dollars, one-time funds for coronavirus needs. Those have been spent. The $245,000 that we have for the ESER funds are almost spent. We're at about, we're a little over halfway on that fund through October. So, amended appropriation, board meeting minutes, those are coming forward to keep in compliance with Ohio Revised Code standards. For our donations, we always want to thank our community for their support and in-kind donations, as we saw in Mr. Ray's report, with their generosity in bringing in through their students, the blankets and things for our families in need, but also for their time. We will recognize the, these donations as they are above that $500 threshold that is in policy. So, we have a $3,000 donation for substance abuse education from the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office to Owentangie Berkshire Middle School. This was due to Mr. Rock's participation in filing for this application. He's a guidance counselor there. We have a $1,200 for the purpose of flexible seating from the Burlington Adopt a Classroom Program at Orange Middle School. So, Mrs. Bratton, our science teacher there at Orange Middle, applied for this and received this donation to help with some additional classroom furniture that will help be more mobile in the situation that we're in. Just over $5,000 for Liberty High School Assistant Ice Hockey Coach from Liberty Athletic Boosters. And just over $5,800 from, to Orange High School for several different coaches, an assistant basketball, two bowling coaches, and assistant football coach from the Owentangie Orange Athletic Boosters. So, we're grateful for all of those donations. We thank you for your time and effort and your additional support to the district. The last item is to approve the purchase in accordance with ORC. And that item, that particular item was to work on a billing from Ohio State University for mental health services that were just over $41,000. You may remember approving that contract previously when we received the student well-being and wellness funds from the state. We just missed the purchase order in terms of having it put in place and approved at the beginning of the fiscal year. There were several absences within the department that's responsible for that. So, between that and the COVID planning and CDL planning, it just happened to be one item that was missed. So, our protocols and our controls are still in place as needed to handle the day-to-day fiscal reporting. And by bringing this to you for approval in accordance with this ORC, we are continuing that good stewardship and making sure that things are in compliance with those codes. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Is the Liberty, is it 5,000 or 500?
It should be 5,147. I think the comma got moved, got put before the 5 and it should be after the 5. That's a typing error on my part. I apologize.
I have one question about the tax collections. So, are we up, is the budget up at 700,000 because of tax collections came in higher than anticipated? Or is that, are they unrelated? One savings or? I just wondered how, given the pandemic, how, what our collection rate was overall.
So, the actual collection rate was higher than we had anticipated. We thought it would, it would fall because of the pandemic. It's actually closer to 100% or slightly over when we had anticipated it being, historically is about 96 to 97%. So, what we have to monitor going forward is how does that tie into Board of Revision cases? And once folks get their final assessments for calendar year 2020 or their valuations for 2020, will that cause Board of Revision cases where they get that assessment lowered, causing a kind of a dip or a collection rate that might go back down?
School Board Association issued something about?
Yeah, since they were gonna. There is a House, there's a House Bill 751 that is out there in legislation. I think it's going to be passed, if it hasn't passed already, that changes how commercial, not residential, but commercial property owners can challenge their valuation. It's no longer, how it used to be is it was the value that it was at the beginning of the calendar year. So, whatever your valuation was in January, that was your tax valuation for the year. But what the, the legislation changes is what is the trigger for being able to ask for your valuation change? So, now they can use a sale or another market trigger to ask for a valuation decrease outside of that January 1 timeframe. So, for example, if they sell in April and they lost a bunch of money on the property, they could go to the Board of Revision and say, hey, that's no longer the market rate, here's the sale rate. We want to go through the Board of Revision process.
Okay.
So, it's concerning and not knowing exactly what's going to happen and how the pandemic will affect that. The general assumption is that it's going to increase our Board of Revision cases and thereby probably decrease our property valuations in some regard. To how, to what extent, we're not really sure yet. We don't have a good sense of what that will be until we get into January, February and start actually seeing those cases come forward.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. And just for the boards reference, we do work with Rich and Gillis Log Group. They actually are monitoring our Board of Revision cases and take those to court on behalf of the district. So, there is someone who's watching it and attentive to it regular, on a regular basis that can catch those items and move quickly versus just our department alone who would probably end up with lagged information and not being able to be attentive to it as it needs. So, we, we're in a good position to keep updated on that.
Great, thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mrs. Hatfield, do we have any public participation this evening?
Yes, we do. If you don't mind, I would, Mrs. Davis is going to read to us our public participation. As a reminder, each public participation can have up to five minutes of duration to read unless the presiding officer extends that, which would be Mindy. So, I will let you know if we are hitting that five-minute mark.
Well, welcome to the podium, Mrs. Davis.
Thank you, Mrs. Patrick. I would just like to note that there is a different format to submit public participation starting this meeting. So, individuals can fill out a Qualtric survey and that is how the information is submitted. So, for the record, I'd like to say the first submission is incomplete from a James Davis, not related to me. So, there is no comment, but it was submitted. The second one is from Maureen Botes, 4737 Seville Court, Powell, Ohio. With multiple studies showing that children in school is not the source of community spread of the COVID-19 virus, i.e. there is a very low transmission rate from child to child, teachers and staff are not getting it from their students by, from, but, from community exposure, as well as many pediatricians and mental health doctors recommending children be in school full-time. What is the timeline to get our kids the full education that they are missing out on during hybrid learning? Next, we have Jamie Smith, 5444 Astor Way, Galena. Can the school board send more frequent updates to parents? The governor gives multiple press conferences a week, after which most parents are anxiously awaiting a response from the school board. Even a "nothing has changed, our learning models will remain unchanged for the next week" would be helpful. Next is Kristi Nun, 2597 Costa Trace, Lewis Center. Multiple officials, including the World Health Organization, the CDC, and Dr. Fauci have stated that children should be in school. The past four months have proven that schools aren't super-spreaders of COVID, as our rates of infection are remarkably low. At what point will OLSD allow our kids to return to school to receive the education we send them to Owentangie for? Keep the CDL option for families that prefer. It's time we recognize the effect the hybrid approach is having on mental health and learning for many students. Splitting the student body into two groups when they aren't divided in the same manner for extracurriculars is illogical. Canceling every school event, example dances, and not allowing students to attend sporting events is robbing them of memories from these years. The kids are still spending time together, both in and out of school. Not allowing them to have these experiences is damaging. While I'm grateful that OLSD has remained open, the time has come to return to a regular school schedule, allow the option to attend extracurricular events, and once again prioritize education. Thank you. Next is Susan Wilson, 7389 Summerfield Drive, Lewis Center. Elected board members, the responsible thing to do is to work to improve the education for our students, as well as decreasing their risks of suicide, overdose, and domestic violence. It is not appropriate with the current knowledge to continue keeping students out of school. Decisions made now... Decisions made now will affect the students today and in their future. Some factors important to me regarding my child's education and the education of other children in our community include the following. One, students need to be educated five days a week via teacher lectures, synchronous education. Two, students need to be educated via teacher lecture, synchronous teaching during quarantine. Three, the quarantine guidelines should be reviewed and become less strict. Four, should it continue, the hybrid model needs to be improved for struggling students. Five, keep sports and extracurricular activities ongoing. When considering decisions for the district, the data should be considered. Consider why we are doing what we are doing. What number of students that have been quarantined became ill during quarantine? What number of students have declining grades? What is the survival rate for each age group? What is the suicide, overdose, mental health hospitalization rate of our students compared to previous years? Is COVID-19 impacting people in the district, students, teachers, families, other than by the measures taken to curtail it? Please report these numbers on the district COVID dashboard. These are the symptoms listed for COVID-19 per the Ohio website. Fever, chills, cough, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, muscle or body aches, headache, loss of taste or smell, sore throat, congestion, runny nose, nausea or vomiting, and diarrhea. This is a very broad list and includes symptoms for the common cold, ear infections, and the flu. The current Ohio case definition of a COVID-19 case includes probable and confirmed cases. One qualification for a probable case is, quote, "meets vital records criteria with no confirmatory laboratory evidence for SARS-CoV-19," end quote. This would mean that someone with a runny nose could be counted as a positive COVID-19 case without even having a known exposure or a positive test. In the presser with Governor DeWine on December 7th, he stated that a backlog of antigen tests will be reported. This will be approximately 12,000 cases. Consider this case description information and the reported backlogs when looking at the numbers of cases determining the level of our county and your corresponding actions. Is it safe to be in schools? There is a 99.9% recovery rate for COVID-19 for all age groups. There have been 127 deaths in the U.S. for the CDC in children 0 to 17 years old. This level of threat does not warrant the current restrictions placed on the students in your care. As a school district, you can continue to honor the requests of parents concerned for their health with virtual learning models. Allow the others to attempt to regain the quality education that has drawn so many to the Oland TNG school districts so our children can stop falling behind other districts that are providing five days of synchronous education to their students. Thank, thank you, Suzy Wilson. And she included several links to data from the CDC and ODH.
I responded to that email.
Okay. Next is Stephanie Fichtelman, 518 Crickstone Drive, Delaware. If the Ohio Teacher Union is asking for a two-week quarantine, how are they not seeing this as a bonus two-week vacation? There is no spread at school. You asked CDL kids if they want to stay that way, but didn't ask hybrid if they want full-time. Why? What's the reason for that? I won't accept a neglect to answer this time. Next, Nicole Ulrich, 1020 Cattail Cove, Delaware. I am concerned about the lack of contact tracing by the Delaware Health Department due to the sheer volume of cases. That's it. Next, Jessica Reuter, 185 West Case Street, Powell. Schools need to open in January 2021 after break. There is no evidence supporting hybrid teaching instead of full-time instruction. Our kids are depressed and falling behind. My kid's attitude is so amazing when they get home from in-person school. Next, Kurt McDowell, 7247 Trillium Drive. I'm inquiring about the email messages that we receive from our kids' schools versus what the dashboard shows. We, we receive many more messages about a positive or probable case than what is displayed on Friday's updated dashboard. Which one is accurate? Next, Ramen Kera, 1164 Ball Morel Drive, Delaware. Wondering, since now we have experience with virtual school, once COVID is over and kids are back to school full-time, can we possibly have this option, especially when parents have off-site conferences or other out-of-city commitment where kids have to tag along? Based on last year's scenarios, kids had to request vacation and then they got bored while off-site with parents. If we can have the option for virtual school when kids are out of city but can attend school, or most important, if they are slightly sick but can attend virtual school versus sending them to school and spread the sickness. If doable, teachers can upload meeting and work or go live while teaching other students in class to the ones off-site can attend to and not miss and count towards the absence. I personally feel lots of parents will love this option of flexibility and not missing the kiddo's school. Thanks for your time and any possible support in this case. And that concludes the public participation.
Well, it was a pleasure to listen. Thank you, Mrs. Davis. We have a couple of discussion items this evening. So first to the podium would be Mr. Jeff Gordon, our Director of Business Management and Facilities. He will be giving us the five-year capital improvement plan.
I'm only looking at it for the, for what Kevin's looking on it for.
Five-year payment plan?
Yes. How much concrete is in here? That's what I want to know.
You can be certain we'll pay each of the five years. So first I want to say, Mrs. Patrick, thank you for your kind words and your super, or your board president's update. It's a pleasure to have such a supportive board and follow the leaders of our leadership team out front. We're doing that, it's, they've been great and we appreciate that. When we were here last, we reviewed in the spring prior to the passage of the bond, a proposed, if the bond passes, this is what we're looking at for projects going forward. And you have that there in front of you as well as, as on the screen here. So now we're fortunate that it took a little longer than we wanted, but that bond has passed and we've been able to put together this plan. Now originally, we had planned to start some of these, work on some of the commitments we'd made to the community during the levy campaign this past summer. Unfortunately, with the timing of levy passage, those were put off, which is, so our plan is to get those things done this summer, as many as we can, not all, but as many as we can. And you see those at the top of the presentation there, where we have, we have the bonds broken out and in that list of bonds are the playgrounds and the security vessels that Mr. Rafe mentioned when he was discussing the contract, negotiating a contract for Robertson Construction to help manage those projects. As he mentioned, we have 15 playgrounds and 16 security vessels that we'll be installing in the short period over the summer to get those in for school, as well as the other projects you see on there that were part of this, this past 2020 bond, including the commitment to put another driveway to leave some of the traffic concerns at Hyatt Middle School and the parking lot expansion there. The expansion of the parking that was on the bond issue at the Liberty, I'm sorry, the West Transportation Center, was, that will be in the summer of 2022. So that's one of the items that's pushed out. We'll be doing the broadcast journalism moves this summer as well. So again, we're really working to fulfill the commitment we made in our last bond issue to pass those, as well as stay on top of the other items that were on there. And that's the roof replacements and the mechanicals, bus replacements and all of those items. One thing of note on the bus is we have another year, one more year of bus replacements there, as you see on the 2016 bond. So the bus replacements for the 2020 bond are pushed out a year. So those will be a year out further than some mechanical replacements. Down below are what you've heard me refer to over the years as are the buckets. And again, these buckets are, the budget numbers are set this year based on projects that we're, we're expecting or already working on since this is fiscal '21 year. These priorities come from meeting with principals, meetings we've had over past years, meetings we have, we try to go around each building in the fall and have those discussions. So where these numbers get set are based on priorities of the buildings, priorities of safety, equipment, and other programs that just, you know, a lot of them we've been working on and getting funding for. So we set those priorities working along with our administrators in the district. Future years are a little bit different than what you see in the fiscal year 2021. And that's because those are kind of our target numbers and our budget numbers. But as we get into the year like we have with fiscal '21, we know more of the projects. And some years there may be more in like electrical. This year we've got several theater upgrades that would fall into electrical. So some, some funds may move up there versus some other areas that we projected now that we know more of what the projects are and we're in the process of bidding out and moving forward with those. So that'll continue to flow up and down as we go year to year. And we'll share those, those numbers. At the bottom, you see that there's the contingency balance, which is not budgeted. And that's based on what our expected collections are on the PI levy. So we've, we've budgeted $250,000 less than what we expect the collections to be. And as you can see, that builds yearly from the $250,000, the first year, $500,000. The other part is if we have money that we don't spend out of the buckets in each fiscal year that is not set aside to carry forward for a specific project, that would also be added to those totals at the bottom. So you can, you'll see that as we go forward as well. So happy to get into more specific projects if you'd like me to. Otherwise, I'll take questions. Yes? They, yes, because of the, we don't have a schedule yet of when they'll be shut down. We'll go in and likely do a lot of demo work early on. And again, we're not replacing all the fixtures. We're replacing the main structure, making that handicap accessible, putting soft surface in. We have a couple other alternates with some other pieces of equipment that pending budget and where we're at, you know, we may be able to fit in on the budget we had for the bond. We are going around and looking at other pieces of equipment that's remaining and, and making repairs and making sure that equipment's in good shape, probably for that soft surface around it. But yes, at different times. We don't have a schedule. I think we'll probably demo a group and then kind of move behind. You start with the replacement of the big structure and then come behind with the board's surface. So over the summer, a large part of the summer, the playgrounds will be shut down. We talked with our curriculum department, our people services department, for any summer programs we may be able to have that need to be in the buildings. We would come in different entrances with security vessels and try to have those at some of the buildings where we put preschool playgrounds in last year. And they have an option if they need a playground to do those at those buildings. We started those conversations with those departments as well.
Thanks.
Will the baseball fields remain open if we're allowed to play sports? Like, will, will?
Some are used this summer.
Yeah.
Right, but will that affect, will the construction affect those fields?
It should not because the actual construction will be within the fence of the playground. So that should not impact any of the associated fields.
Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
No, I mean, I'm encouraged to see technology helps spend asphalt. This is nice.
I saw you calculating.
I'm still, you know, concerned that we're spending more on student devices and network infrastructure. I'd rather be building the end with that people can tie into than being in the device business, but I continue to debate that.
I would, we'll have to defer that question to Tech or Mr. Rafe because we manage that budget within the PI, but.
That is a tough one. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
You're welcome.
Let's have Mrs. Davis back to the podium for her branding license agreement update for us.
Many years in the work.
Many years.
Yes, thank you. And Mrs. Patrick, I just wanted to say thank you for your kind comments and most importantly, for your service.
I forgot people services. That's who I...
Oh, gosh.
I was in here one day this summer. I hate to interrupt you. Every one of them were on the phone trying to set up the fall program, so. By no disrespect, I need to leave them out.
Everyone has worked so hard. Absolutely. All right, so branding and licensing update. First, we'll start with a quick update about branding. We'll have a more in-depth update at the end of January for you. But at the moment, all of our elementary schools are fully engaged and have implemented their brands throughout the semester. Our middle schools are preparing for their brand reveal the week of January 18th. We've just finished their brands. And I will be sending an email out to all of the community the week of January 11th to remind them about the brand project and where we are as we begin to get ready to roll out the middle school refreshed, refined logos and mascots. And then the high schools are kicking off their brand committee work this week. So we have met with three of the four and are excited to get that work started. Okay, so on the agenda, you have for your approval to consider the licensing representation agreement. This will kick off our licensing program finally. The purpose of this program is to really provide that consistency, protect our logos and marks across the district and begin to create a new revenue stream for us. And then finally, to really help us with partnering with vendors and others in the community that interface with Oland TNG. So pending your approval, we will enter into an agreement with a company called K-12 Licensing. They are a partner with many, many thousands of high schools and districts across, across the country that have had a lot of experience administering the full-service licensing program. So a brief introduction to K-12 Licensing is that, as I mentioned, they are the licensing agency for thousands of high schools and school districts. They have many connections with top manufacturers across the country, which we'll talk about shortly. They've partnered with the National Federation of State High School Associations and other 31 out of 50 state high school athletic associations. And they have quite a history of distributing millions of dollars back to high schools for the sale of licensed merchandise. A quick look at the representation that they have across the country. You might note that in Ohio, they have 416 partners, 49 states represented. So that's great history that they have in this K-12 arena already. I wanted to share this slide because I think it really speaks to the power of having a licensing program for K to 12. The largest audience in sports is high school attendance. And so when you think about how many millions of people are attending high school athletic events, you can start to think about the power of this licensing program. So that bodes well as we move forward. They, they have a three-pronged strategy that we'll be using with this licensing agreement. They have protection of the brand, a promotion of the brand, and the profit, of course. And the protection of that brand, we are going to look to them to help us with our licensing goals and then really talk about our growth opportunities, creating that opportunity to really kick this program off and avoid future trademark issues and streamline distribution of artwork and logos. And then also operate a licensing hub so that vendors who would like to become licensed with us will have an easy way of becoming licensed so that they can then distribute our marks on merchandise. So they will be the entity that really processes any new vendor applications for clients. So I would say I probably get at least one request a day for a vendor who wants to sell our, our marks on their merchandise. So they will manage and quality control that. They will manage any requests for new licensing and any renewals and just that entire operation, which will be, will provide consistency and thoroughness along with experience. And then they'll also provide liability coverage for, for us in any of the merchandise that is being sold that could potentially have any liability issues, like I shared with you previously.
previously. Any consumable products tend to be like temporary tattoos, food items, things like that that could potentially be a higher liability than a t-shirt. Promotion, they work directly with the licensees, the retailers, and us in a three-pronged approach to help build our retail strategy. And so they work, obviously, with some of those big names that you see there on the screen, as well as 55 total national retailers to get merchandise in stores. So they've already been speaking with Kroger and Meyer and Target within our area that I happen to know of that have already reached out to them.
I thought it was eyebrow.
One of the things that I like that they also are able to help us with is work with these retailers to identify areas where there could be new merchandise that doesn't exist already to help increase that revenue stream by putting things out there that might not already be present, and they have that experience because they're working with so many school districts and national retailers across the country. Whoops, that was not good. Okay, here we go. One of the things there, they've just partnered with Amazon. I think this is a really great opportunity for us. They are creating online, on-demand stores with no outlay of cash, and none of this will we be putting any, any dollars forward. This is all revenue in, no dollars out. But this program on Amazon provides the ability to have on-demand online stores shipped directly to the individual. Fun fact here is 60% of all online product searches begin on Amazon, just in general, so it will be great to be represented on this platform. And then with profit, they will help through all of these avenues of protecting and promoting, they will help us maximize this new revenue source. We'll receive, as a district, annual royalty checks from the product sales, and, you know, I would love to tell you that I have an estimate of what we will earn in this first year of a partnership with K-12. I really don't know. It depends on us. It depends on how much we are able to promote our brands, branded and trademarks. It will, you know, really be how much we engage in this partnership. And I've asked them to give us a quote. They also are not able to tell us exactly what it would be that we would earn here or even ballpark it. So it's up to us to really make this be beneficial. And then just to reiterate, this requires zero investment from us in this partnership as far as dollars go. And then some potential frequently asked questions about the program. Why is it exclusive? It allows K-12 to really provide those approvals and work directly with those national retailers directly instead of crowding the field with lots of different representation. Streamlines our ability to do that protect, promote, profit piece that they have. I think probably one of the big questions folks out there might have is will this affect Booster Club and local stores? We know that those relationships are so important, and we will work very closely to help those booster programs understand that they are exempt from this program. They will still receive those dollars and that they would have been receiving anyway, but we'll work closely with them to educate and understand and help them continue to navigate so that there's not confusion about how this works in conjunction with what they've always done. Reiterate this again, it does not cost us anything, and we, this doesn't require renewal, but if we would terminate the agreement, we would have a sell-off period of 180 days for any existing licensed merchandise that is out in the marketplace in all of these stores. So that would be the case there. I just also wanted to share that in speaking with Emily, that these dollars will go into the general fund and will help us support programs that the district is either currently undertaking or would like to undertake. And that is the licensing agreement.
I just have one. And Krista, I just want to clarify that when you said local stores, that doesn't mean the local Kroger, but possibly a small business in downtown Powell.
Correct. Correct.
Around 23, I was out.
Yes.
That is correct. Any other questions?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our board has a couple items of business. The first of which is we have to assign a pro temp president for our first Board of Education meeting so that we can vote on a president and vice president. Do I have any nominations for personal candidates?
I would nominate Dave King because he does such a nice job year after year.
Thank you, Mrs. Feazel. A second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. And then our, I guess we need to vote on that individually, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Please. So, Mrs. Tappel, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick. Thank you, and congratulations.
Our second order of business is Mrs. Wagner Feazel is resigning from her position on the Delaware Area Career Center Board. And how many years have you been on that board?
11.
I think you've served.
Yes, and it's not that I don't love that program. I love that program. I tell everyone it's a gem for this county. I just have a lot on my plate right now with work and this school board and running in November, so I just need time for other things.
And we need you to have that time. So we need a nomination for your replacement, or do we just state one?
Well, it's on the agenda to nominate you.
Oh, I am on there, but I don't know why I questioned that. Okay, so now we need to vote if you would like me to replace Julie and serve on the Delaware Area Career Center Board. Please call the roll.
I'll make a motion to move forward. Give seconds.
Okay. There you go.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Do I vote on myself?
Can.
Yes. Okay, there you go.
You can vote against yourself.
I vote against myself. Mrs. Tappel, will you please present your treasure action items this evening?
Yes, please. I would like to present treasure action items A through E for approval, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your superintendent action items?
Yes, I'd like to present superintendent action items A through G for approval.
First?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
I think we've already had our discussion, so did you have any, a discussion item? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick? Thank you.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening. Seriously, no one?
So moved.
It's 9:08. Second?
Second.
Okay, so. It was, it was Mrs. Feazel.
We're gonna put Mrs. Feazel, okay, gotcha.
Dr. Weiss? And please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Feazel?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yeah.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I wish everybody a safe, inquiet, socially-distanced holiday. Rest up.